I want to first thank any of the folks who made it possible tonight. First off, thank you very much, Arlo and Hilda. Thank you also to Pastor Lauren, Hilltop Community Church for providing this lovely forum for us, this lovely venue for us to have this tonight. Also, big thanks to the Fairview Hilltop Neighborhood Council. And is the microphone okay?
Yeah, we're okay.
And so, thanks to all of the groups that allowed us to have this tonight. This will be screened through by our audience as well. Thank you especially to all the candidates that are coming out tonight. It's been the end of a long week and we know everyone is working hard out there. So, thanks again for being here. Also, as we get into tonight's debate, I would remind all candidates that there are no electronic devices, so please turn on your cell phones or laptops. Let's not use those while we're having our conversation. A little bit of ground rules. We want to get through a lot of information tonight because a lot of materials to get through and a big group to talk to. We're going to do 90 seconds with about three statements per each candidate. We're going to get four questions with 60-second answers. Then we're going to have a lightning round in which three questions will take about 30 seconds each. At the conclusion of that, we'll get a 60-second closing statement. So, with that, also I'll order on you that Don Calistino is up here. He has a timer ready for us. And those signals are pretty self-explanatory. With that, let's begin tonight with our introduction. I'll start on my left and proceed to the right. And we will go again with 90 seconds. Introduce your statements for each candidate. First up, Diego Garcia, please.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Diego Garcia. I am a 40-year resident in Richmond. So, basically, this is my option. 43 years old and this is the only town that I know of. I was born in Mexico. I migrated here in 1977. But my dad's been here since 1963, so I think that should be born here. My grandmother was born in an old Richmond hospital on the North Street. And after my 19th birthday, I've been dedicating my time to this community as a youth counselor, as a mediator, as a gang anchor. I worked at the Richmond Police Department as a crime prevention specialist. I worked in the school districts about 15 years here in the western of the coast and also the Mount Devil School District. I acquired all the different titles and also responsibilities in different organizations. So, my passion is being able to help with the community. That's all I want to do. I do it quite well. I organized a soccer program, an economic program with over 300 families. And we contributed with $40,000 to community services. Community services is something that really bonded with my community. So, if I'm related, there are so many things I would love to do to give continued assistance in my community. Thank you.
Mr. Garcia, thank you. Next up, Carol Johnson.
Hello, and thank you everybody for coming. We've had an opportunity to introduce ourselves. I am originally from San Francisco. I've been in Richmond for 22 years and I would really rather live anywhere else. And I graduated from my education, earned my bachelor's degree, and I received in the news that I took my first internship here in Richmond and a current life in college and a number of my children's friends at the job. So, that's my guiding law. First, I could sit back anymore and just do nothing. So, in 2007, I became involved with the Gray Campaign for the Young Citizens and the healing circles of both Richmond and Charlotte Harris. And I also got involved in other issues. I'm talking about a number of other issues. Creating the minimum wage, banning the box, the non-conformity, the property, people getting second and third chances to turn their lives around, protesting the deal expansion, reducing homelessness. Those are all of the things I would continue to work on regardless of what I really have.
Ms. Johnson, thank you. Next up, Otto Rosinos.
Hello, everyone. My name is Otto Rosinos. I am pastor Lauren. I am the proud daughter of immigrant and gay neighborhoods of the Lord's Link, the Civil War. I am very excited to be here and I thank you for becoming a part of this movement here. We have really great candidates and I'm excited to share a little bit about myself. I graduated from UC Santa Cruz after attending community college. And I've been working with mainly immigrant mothers who are renters and working class who have been advocating for legislation that will help them thrive and to help our kids have a meaningful impact in their community as well. I am a proud member of the Congressional Hunger Center Emerson Fellowship where I worked with migrant families to advocate for different policies around school legal programs to make them more culturally relevant. I believe that I come from that city of Richmond. We have a great opportunity to engage our residents to participate in local legislation. And I get very excited knowing that there's a great population here of immigrants and immigrants as well because that is part of my family. My parents who are immigrants, both here in California and in Los Angeles. And I look forward to repeat that experience, George. Thank you.
Ms. Rosinos, thank you. Next up, Dennis Johnson III.
Well, thank, I would like to thank four guys who've been visiting for attending this opportunity. I have three challenges, Dennis Johnson III, and I'm running for Richmond City Council. I was born at Brookside Hospital before they changed the name to doctors who closed the door. I was raised in the Garden Fire and I also lived in Kitty Meadow before they changed the name of that to Honor Rehons. I'm a fourth-generation Richmond resident. My great-grandparents came up and worked in crisis chivalry. My grandfather was the owner of the 40-year collective in Brooklyn, Richmond. In addition to that, I'm a fourth-generation youth member as well. I'm a proud chapter of the Keatsville Local 856. And I work at Richmond High School as a school community organizer. In that position, I have the opportunity to coordinate both district and community resources and eliminate the social, academic, and economic barriers that stand in the way of our student advancement success. I graduated from Howard University in 2013 before taking the position at Richmond High School. In addition to that, I serve as the chair of the Economic and Urban Development Commission. I also serve on the Citizens Police Review Commission and on the Board of Refuge for the Richmond Movement Association as well as the Swedish Boys and Girls Club. If you vote on November 6, my platform includes public safety, community engagement, and economic empowerment. Once I say my name is Dennis Johnson III, I'm third on ballot and I'm looking for your vote on November 6. If you see your ballot on Monday, make sure you check that third box. Thank you.
Ms. Johnson, thank you. Next up, Eduardo McKenna.
Hello, my name is Eduardo McKenna. I'm a Richmond City Council member and I'm voting for reelection. I'm a retired teacher. I thought I found my elementary and shall live in elementary. As a elementary school teacher, I learned that what happens in the classroom is governed by what happens on the schoolyard. And what happens on the schoolyard is governed by what happens in the community. And it all comes back to the fact that we are one community and one community has two lives together. If we did separately, we're bound to fail. As a school teacher, I was also a steward for my school, so I worked in the union. And I helped organize March for Education, which was an organization that fought for the schools, fought for the kids at school level. We organized March that went from my school to our elementary and secondary so that we could have that forgiven because at that time we had already paid off all the grants that we sold the interest. So, it's this kind of organizing, working with parents, teachers, with community leaders, with students, that will help us rise together. And as your council member, I want to do that. So, vote for me on November 6. I really appreciate your support. Thanks for coming out.
Ms. McKenna, thank you. Next up, Caesar Zavilla.
Thank you, Dr. Schick. He barely has a name for coming out and also everyone else from other neighborhoods about being in the community. My name is Caesar Zavilla and I am known as a candidate that gets things done. And I picked up that title because I've been involved with the community for a very long time. And whenever I see an issue, I tackle it head-on. From this is how I was able to fund and create the Hilltop District Neighborhood Council. We gave voice to two neighborhood councils that were inactive and then gave voice to a area that did not have a Neighborhood Council. That's how we created the Neighborhood Council right next to you that now helps oversee the million-dollar budget for the Hilltop last eight minutes district. I am also one of the co-founders of Community Making the Best that we're hoping to revitalize 23rd Street, one of our other major business districts in the city. And also founder and president of Richmond Metro Pride, city of Richmond's first and only LGBTQI organization amongst others. And I see something that's wrong and I try to go in there and fix it. Community leaders call me when they need help with something. I'm always the first one to raise my hand. I'm really difficult when I'm saying no when it comes to helping somebody because we are a community full of work. I am balanced and I am pragmatic. Thank you.
Ms. Zavilla, thank you. Next up, Matt Bates.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Matt Bates. I am one of the strongest supporters of this community. We go way back, all the way to the time that the community was first constructed. That's when the discrimination was so strong that African-American Latinos, Asians could not afford homes, could not buy homes otherwise they were. Now, the Hilltop, the Hilltop Week became one of the strongest communities that permitted all citizens of our community to live. I'm very proud of the Hilltop community. I worked for many of you with the school together, the street, our mission, kind of college. And we fought a lot of battles here in Hilltop area. The school situation where they wanted to bring the continuation to school. The T-Mobile, they wanted to bring the T-Mobile relaxation, even in case of school. I was one that worked with you. I didn't do it by myself, but we worked collectively to solve it. And that's what I've been doing with Hilltop community ever since I've been on the council. This Hilltop community is one of the strongest voting blocks that I have in the city. So, I appreciate you, I love you, and I would follow to continue to serve you. Thank you very much.
Mr. Bates, thank you. Next up, David Shulval.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you very much to the community Hilltop, Neighborhood Council for hosting this wonderful evening. And thank you all for coming out on this Friday night. My name is David Shulval and I asked for your vote and here's why. So, for the last 18 years we've lived in Richmond, in the last nine, I've been a community volunteer, starting off with being the dad to the president of our school. And in that time, became the president of the Quarters and Business Association and Neighborhood Council. And what we've done for the past 90 years is raise money for local nonprofits, some $100,000 raise. And what I've learned from that, after being years and years of business development, is that my heart wants to be a service. I want to be a servant leader. So, my life is constructed as faith, family, and finance, and it don't get out of order. So, when I look at this thing, I run for office, you know, it doesn't really attract me to be like, oh, I'm not finding people that think and sound like me. What I've been looking for was to find people who care about their community and get them together and talk them down. And so, for the last 90 years and then March when I started out, is I've been doing collaborative solution workshops, bringing people together on issues like human trafficking, illegal dumping, and of the like. To get people in the room to find solutions. And that's what I'm very, very excited about. So, on November 6, catch a wave with a fire network.
Ms. Shulval, thank you. Next up, David McLevy.
Good evening. Thank you all for coming out here. Most of you, because I've seen me a few times, you guys, and I was on council. I wish you can get rid of that and give you reports of what was happening at council. I am a teacher at the World of the Pen. I am very proud of all of our. There's people who contribute me for hours coming, my classmates, friends, family, even my teachers. Another part of what I mean voluntarily is like a coach. They teach students how to write essays. While I was a mentor, I'm a partner, while I volunteered for the Richmond City, there were 500 cities in the city. And that is why I'm one of the first in council. We know what we mean. We improve our education, better jobs, more housing, safety. I served on the Time Prevention Board, better leadership, community community police, which is the best way to fight fraud. On the council, I approved hundreds of housing units for all income levels, including affordable housing. I passed the Richmond Police Annual Scholarship Program, $1,500 for five and 100-year scholarships. Thank you.
Mr. McLevy, thank you. Next up, Jim Rogers.
Thank you very much for coming out. Thank you, Neighborhood Council, and your church for having us. We've heard from a number of people who have 13 candidates running. Good people, good candidates, good issues. But when you vote on November 6 or whatever, what you really need to look at, it's not just, oh, we can try and do the things by policy. And I think we've heard from some politicians, you know, when you ask yourself, who's the person that could get that? And I think I have a record as a council member for many years that could get that. Couple of examples. One is to negotiate on conflict, general, this is work from Matt Bates. The Chevron 2014 refinery, the world's best agreement in the United States. I don't care if you talk about the jobs you got, $90 million we can invest, $35 million for the Richmond Police, which have been referred to the protections to the environment in the way of getting rid of dangerous, seizing danger, so that it should have happened 30 years ago. So, I have the experience both as a successful small businessman and as a left official, to see both sides as sorry and negotiated a great deal for the community. When we had a threat to those schools a year ago, I led a fight, got involved in a community management. So, I won't be talking too much about this issue later in the conversation.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers. Don't stay far from that fight because we're going to call on you first and progress down the line. We have four questions upcoming. You have one minute responses each and we will go back and forth across. So, we have questions two, three, and four. So, to begin, a lot of questions as they're addressing to the Hilltop area. Hilltop residents have seen violent crime increase by 12%. The most common request of neighborhoods across the nation is that we need more police officers and better public safety. If we're like that, how do you plan to bring more officers to our neighborhoods and make our neighborhoods safer, healthier places to live? 60 seconds, Jim Rogers, please.
Thank you. I think there's two sides to that point. One side is saving the revenue to get the police officers to be put on the street. Again, I don't understand that we don't sustain safe, well, part of the police officers. But I am one that, a hundred years ago, 2003, I am one who served together to pass the Totally Tax. That tax was created for two-thirds by a big company in the street. It does suck six million a year. We were able to bring more police and start a good OMS, safety program, very badly, very soon had a way of bringing open fire stations. The other side of the money besides the revenue is avoiding wasting city money. I was the most hardened opponent of the eminent building scene a few years ago. That was a plan where we were going to help underwater homeowners from losing their mortgage. It never saved a home across the city nearly a million dollars. I spoke out against that, starting with the popularity of the timeline of helping out.
Dennis. Thank you, Ms. Rogers. Same question, David McLevy.
So, I serve on the Time Prevention Board, as I mentioned earlier. We try to build better police community relations as a way of fighting fraud. Because police officers, yes, we do have to raise revenue in order to pay for that. You know, the most important thing we need to do is make sure that every mall gets built and gets built properly because that could mean a relationship can be broken for your, in the city budget. That is first, it can help us hire police officers. I also supported a full audit so that we figure out where we are wasting city money because that is also something that we need to do. And we actually need folks who really believe that we need to hire police officers to fight fraud because I need people to feel that police officers is very need to fight fraud.
Thank you, Ms. McLevy. Same question, David Shulval.
Yeah, so I participated in the, the city of Richmond has a community safety ambassador program. Well, you know, if I'm going to be making decisions out of the amount of money and services that are going to be provided, I better learn what this police department does. So, in the modern era, we expect our police officers to be, to be organized. And so, we are not, we're not building it out to a level that they need to our baseline services. So, we're now about 20 officers right now. They're on the disabled list. We have 178 officers. We need to rebuild to that level. And in the community across the country, it's very hard to recruit. It's very hard for, for you to recruit. So, what I'm saying is get the community involved. We use some videos and we say, if we want police officers that want to do community policing, we give them the tools. Because 112,000 of us and 178 of them, let's work together to believe in our community, right?
Thank you, Mr. Shulval. Same question?
At one point, we had 212 police officers. Now we have 80. This council has dropped that budget from 212 to a budget of 178. 20 officers are on the field position. There's another 20 officers that are off on sick leave or accident. Therefore, we have something like 138 officers. Of that 138, here are 20 staff we have. So, we have 128. That is totally 178. We need a full audit of this entire city to find out who's doing what. And then we have revenue, revenue, and revenue. And you can't get revenue unless you have a safe city. No one is going to come into city, Richmond, if the crime is up. So, therefore, we've got to get this city safe. We've got to be a better city, city hall, the business community so they can expand and bring people, citizens, bring businesses to the city. Then you revenue, revenue.
Thank you, Mr. Reeves. Next up, Caesar Zavilla.
Yes, it's not revenue because we've made cuts in the last budget. We've cut about 25 police officers. So, at the top, we have one police officer controlling our area. Do you think at times we have two that have their shifting shifts? So, we get undated once in a while. Because we're known as a safe area, we get one police officer. But the safe area, we know that it's not that safe. How much time is going on if you have heartbreaks out here? How many doughnuts are people doing, right? They're not making doughnuts and you compete with car doughnuts, right? The mall just had a shooting 30 weeks ago. How much time is actually happening? We have to make sure also that you report it, right? So, we have to bring revenue in, but as a community, we have to report the crime that happens. The city is basically sending the data on whatever we have to report it. So, if you don't follow through with your police reports, it never happens. So, they're not putting the resources in the right place. So, we need to do our audit and bring more attention.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers. Next up, Eduardo McKenna.
What we need to do is create a pipeline for our police cadets to attend police academy and then become police officers in Richmond so that our police officers are homegrown. Richmond is at a major disadvantage in the fact that we have the same population as Berkeley. Only we have three times the land面积 that needs to be probed. But this land面积 isn't consolidated like it is in Richmond. We have the city's sand puddle and then we have communities that are outlined like Dairy Hills and West Dairy Hills and Parchester Village, Pointe Valley, which, and then Point, Point Richmond and Richmond Addicts. So, it's difficult to do the kind of community policing that we promote because the streets are so large that the police cannot actually control them the way that they do in Berkeley. So, I go back to police that.
Thank you. Dennis Johnson.
Well, as a member of the Citizens Police Review Commission, public safety is extremely important. And in addition to increasing revenues, we can hire more police officers because as I mentioned, we do have 20 officers out on week and then it might supplement that less than 100 officers. So, in order to get more police officers, we do have to increase revenue. And that does mean bringing in more businesses and expanding existing businesses. But in order to keep our community safe, we have to increase insurance and health services in the city of Richmond. We also have to increase economic opportunities so that way individuals who are getting funds for economic reasons now have another way of making money and of paying resources. Here in the city of Richmond, we have to make sure that we approach public safety from a holistic approach. In addition to providing the police with the resources that they need, we also have to provide other services to the resources that they also need so that way most, so that way you take away the reason for committing fraud. And that's how Ms. Johnson approached public safety, from a holistic approach. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Next up, Otto Rosinos.
The number one complaint that I hear from officers is, I'm often doing what's not my job. They're required to be social workers sometimes, therapists. They're required to show up in the community in a way that it's an economy of knowledge distribution. I do think that sometimes the knowledge should be given ahead because they do approach it with heart and integrity when they need someone in their community. But it continues to be a challenge when those are jobs that need to be filled by professionals who specifically work with our homeless community who are supposed to be working and providing services for our youth. So, he needs to be able to do that so that we can focus on the real problem, prevention. We need to invest more in our youth so that we're avoiding those doughnuts, we're avoiding those problems before they happen. Crime will always reduce when we invest in our youth. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rosinos. Next up, Carol Johnson.
Okay, so I actually did involve in trying to reduce violence since 2011. And we cannot leave all of the police because they are under staff. So, we can find ways to hire more officers from the communities that they serve. And also, the community can do their part, elevate the community, churches and servants. The ones who are involved in the city's part, they do their great job, they're in the community, you know, honestly, throughout their contribution and the neighborhood watch which can be strengthened, but now the police couldn't, they have to do everything. Be everywhere and they can also weed out the problem officers and hold on to the officers who do have integrity and who want to serve. And also, the formerly incarcerated people, you can't have real solutions by excluding them. They need the jobs, the education to reduce the barriers that they have, hopefully, serve their time. They should be able to spend a lot of time which will make the society safer along the way.
Next up, Diego Garcia.
One of my strengths, that's one of my strongest points that I have as a youth counselor and as a gang anchor, also one of the members of Citizens Police Review Commission. Obviously, in our city, it's a kind of a flexibility to raise child. You know, with the police officers not having enough officers out there, that leads to ambulance security in our streets. But not just the officers that need, but also having officers with the right equipment, with the right training, and the right state of mind. We need to have work, community policing, we need to be involved with the community to be able to assist and train our community leaders, our faith groups, our teachers, our people who are directly having services with our kids. Anyone who lives in our community, if we don't get together and be able to lead that concept of the new group, the Grains and Child, it's going to be difficult for any police officer to do anything. want to get together and be able to lead that concept of, uh, of the, uh, new group that are raising a child. It's going to be difficult for any police officer to do anything.
We will start a question too with you, Diego Garcia. And some of the questions that we have as I mentioned, crafted by the residents, the leaders, and whole town community, do include yes and no's with whether you agree with the policy or not? In addition to your explanation, please be clear as the residents here, let them know exactly what you're saying. Be clear and then provide explanation, please. The next question is one of that nine, and it is, the city of Richmond currently has a moratorium on new school construction in city-owned properties. Do you agree with this policy, yes or no? And explain why, please. We have one minute to read it, James. First up, Diego Garcia.
I do agree with it. And we have to be able to give our kids our parents a voice. And they have to have a choice of where they want to get their kids. As far as the development on these areas, I believe that we have to be able to get the concept of what foods are coming into our community to be able to fit the needs of our kids and our parents. I come through the background of, uh, youth counseling and schools. And any of those schools are ready to, most of the schools provide the type of services. And that concept of leaving your child behind, it really was the truth to everyone. So I believe that we should be able to give the parents the, uh, the say-so, what education to be taking to kids, and what type of education should be applied to their own kids. But again, it takes the whole community to be able to make the concept of reality for anyone to, um, to be involved. That's what I say.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Next up, Carol Johnson.
I'm going to read the question.
Yes. The city of Richmond has a moratorium on new school construction on the city-owned properties. Do you agree with this policy? Why you want to have?
Again, I do agree with the policy because I'm very concerned about the charter schools that have come in and they made it harder for traditional schools who are already at this advantage. And, uh, although it sounds good to the parents of battle choice and and the schools that they don't attend, but this, the traditional, they've been suffering. And the charter schools are offering with less oversight and they have not, uh, been, uh, you know, providing the debt that they are almost paying for the traditional school.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Next, Oliver Osos.
Yes, uh, it is important that we have this moratorium on new school constructions because we need to move back towards neighbors to put in schools. They need to be placed in an appropriate place and space where community members can feel like they're surrounded by that school and those resources. So this is the larger issue about smart development. We need to make sure that we're not putting in schools without charge, um, based on what we don't belong. And we also have to make sure they're properly remediated and safe for students. And that doesn't always happen when schools are just placed in a space that might be beneficial for charter state to be able to get a permit. Uh, so yes, I absolutely agree with the moratorium is a principle for us to follow. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Osos. Next up, Gilbert Johnson.
I also agree with the policy. And I disagree with the policy because I firmly believe that at this point in the city's, um, country, we should focus on building housing and economic development. With our property here in city of Richmond, we have to make sure that we're using it to either solve, to work on the housing crisis or to bring in more finances into the city of Richmond. And as someone who is, uh, opposed to the board of charter schools, those types of schools don't make profits. We want to make sure that we're bringing in, that we're using our land to the maximum size of ability. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Next up, Eduardo Ortiz.
I certainly do, uh, agree with this policy. Um, one of the major reasons is that, uh, charter schools do not have to build their buildings according to the field act. The field act is an act that requires charter schools to be built to a specific level that is safe for all students. So when you don't build to the build level, you are actually putting our children in danger. Um, and the other thing is that charter schools also don't hire community workers, public schools do. So, so we need to be true to our charter, we need to be true to our unions, be, uh, aware that the safety of our kids comes first. And, uh, we also end up with schools that have less children than our public schools. So, so we're actually, uh, diluting the, the amounts of money that we have, uh, and then, you know, spending a lot more on, on administration than we need to.
Thank you, Mr. Ortiz. Citizens, we have the same question.
I agree with that as well. Anyway, I'm sorry, I have a schools. Uh, right now, our public graduate schools have not been getting above, you know, the lower, the lower in the neighborhood community schools that last once everybody takes. And that is where the predominantly community that needs the most help lives there. Now, we're not getting the resources there. We're doing our own thing. We have to focus our resources there first. We focus our compensation by opening up any other schools, whatever it might be. But for now, we're, uh, certainly, uh, we're agreeing, uh, they're taking other cities that could be used for housing. Uh, we need to focus on, I don't think, other, other city.
This is a bit of, thank you. Next up, Matt Bates. I support the moratorium. But I think you got to look at why charter schools exist in the first place. And you have choices. They either go to charter schools or private schools and public schools. So we got to improve the quality of our public schools. They've got to be competitive. They got to get better teachers. And they got to be able to perform and then pursue the academic level up. If they did that, you wouldn't have the necessity of charter schools. So I support the moratorium. We got to revitalize that. We can't have them dominating the entire city. This, so, uh, let's be cautious. Look at the pros and the cons. And people do have choices. And, uh, we have to accept that as well.
Thank you, Mr. Reeves. Next up, Gabriel Cholwell.
So I agree with the moratorium. It meets what it's supposed to do. And that is, we want to make sure that the schools are safe. We also often put these schools, charter schools, on par with public schools. And frankly, if you're doing the moratorium in this way, you're actually trying to not get sued. Because the moratorium isn't just on charter schools. It's on all schools built on public property. So they had to, they had to do it that way. They had to, they couldn't just say charter schools straight up. So it has to meet the intended purpose. What are you trying to do? Make schools safer? Make sure that they're on par with, if they have accountability, with their transparency, with our hiring teachers, that our union teachers, so that they are on the same level of playing field with our public schools. Thank you.
Mr. Cholwell, thank you. Next up, Delaney Woodley.
Yeah, so this policy was actually developed by the Council. And yes, I really supported it. I was part of the discussions that led this. I believe that because, so, so one thing was, um, a lot of charter schools are being in commercial areas. And once you go to a charter school in a commercial area, it gives the commercial potential of that area. And that is that the city needs less jobs, less money to save. Second thing is, uh, by reading a school initially, you can circumvent a bunch of, uh, city laws that apply to commercial property. From that, you can always later be turned into commercial property. And so we do not want a bad role. The third thing is also, this concerns me, is that by placing in commercial areas and modern neighborhoods, our charter schools can essentially be selected. Who can, who is very comfortable in school? Only people who can take their kids, their cars, their shoes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Woodley. Next up, Jim Rogers.
I agree with the answer to Kirk. I think that, that, that a lot of issues that I can fight. But I'd go another line. Neighbored schools are important. It's why we say the schools are closing. Uh, we prevented the situation in Chicago. They had neighbored schools closing. There are, they did studies that they found the reading rate dropped, uh, by about, uh, the reading rate dropped by about one rate. They found out that there was going to be less people moving on to college and the way it started also. So it's important to remember that neighbored schools, a whole number of reasons are in the, they are, community involvement being one of the big concerns. Vice president of the PGA National Landry, Lawrence and Dorf, those seven years ago. And, uh, we have, um, we're trying to have the parent involvement, which is one of the reasons why schools can't succeed. So I think this is appropriate. Let's try and make sure that the schools are under related, not where somebody wants a charter school, their convenience, or like.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. This next question will go to you first and then the rest to my left. This will be our final question for maybe sixty seconds will be available there. Then we'll transition to the lightning round. Hubily, rich residents face the highest taxes in the nation. This is by an average, uh, average income within households of fifty-five thousand and a cost of living is thirty-nine point five percent higher than national average. Residents of Richmond, yes, there continues to be dissatisfaction with the level of city services that residents receive. What will you do to improve city services, city service delivery to the, uh, residents of Richmond? Sixty seconds, Jim Rogers, please.
Thank you very much. Two sides. One is the city running efficiently. I've served a small distance from scratch, ran for about twenty years, set up about twenty-five employees. So I have that experience both of being a government regulator, but also being quite a sector businessman who's regulated by the government. So I have that experience just trying to run city efficiently. The other side of the coin is revenue. Now, we're all thinking about economic expansion, but the fact that it's business income is not going to solve our problems. It takes a long time for us for that, uh, for businesses to get started, approved, start making money, et cetera. So it is not going to be sufficient. One of the taxes, I have not supported taxes on loan. Why? Because I think that Richmond provides a lot of important services for people in surrounding areas and they should pay for it. People come here to shop. People come here to work. And big businesses like Jell-O, which busts a lot of pollution and a lot of headaches. So the taxes I supported are then the ones where the big businesses that the land here are going to pay them. And where the people who come here to visit are going to be paying also. That's the main taxes that I think serve.
Thank you, Mr. Woodley. Next up, Delaney Woodley.
Yeah, so we all want better services and police service hours. We want lower crime and more police officers. But our employees, our employees don't work as, work for free. We need to pay them. We need to have some finances. And, you know, I was involved by this data just the other day. Because this, uh, I was financially, you know, most assumed member of, uh, member of council. And what does that mean? You know, the year before I was appointed to council in two thousand and fifteen, the city borrowed money, nine million dollars. Yes, I'm going to say I paid in twenty fifteen to return that, sixteen million, okay? Nine million one year, which is sixteen million the next. But because folks were trying to identify what the, what kind of borrowing they were doing. People have lost, people in this city have lost over a hundred million dollars in stocks. So we need people to cover the finances. And so they stop it.
Thank you, Mr. Woodley. Next up, Gabriel Cholwell.
So, so in one of the collaborative solutions workshops that we have, the governor said, well, we should do efficiency before our, we should do, as we mentioned, foreign audits. So we need to endeavor and analyze where our money is being spent. You know, a, a justice to that is this idea that, um, we've lost employees over the years. We have to cut this last budget season. We have to cut employees because we're spending so much of our money, our city budget. By the year twenty twenty, it's going to be forty-two percent of the dedicated defensive obligations. But we have to get really smart about how we're spending our money and how we want to spend our money. And I've been focused on from the ground up, so a citizens' approach, even neighborhoods, figuring out what they do, budget around what their needs are, and build up from that. I believe that we can really find good ways to do that through funding great businesses and also supporting ones that are here through sales activity so that we can build up from the ground up.
Thank you, Mr. Cholwell. Next up, Matt Bates.
He's a member of the council. I have traveled to the Hilltop, to the center of Walmart, Costco, uh, downtown Fukuoka. And people keep coming to the bin. They have problems. And so if you call your councilman, well, I don't mind you listening. I just know about that. And you call City Hall. Now, when you call City Hall, what do you get? Well, if you want X five Z dollars, point three. If you want, if you want three, if you want such and such, point four. We do not have a service community, city, to respond to the concerns and needs of our citizens. It's plain and simple. We've got to do a better job of being respectful and having someone in the direct view. When I was on the council, when I got in touch with employees, I called Sue Yack, who's the city manager, uh, uh, chief of staff. Well, when I called her, she didn't get the call. And by God, when her didn't get the call, they, they know they got back to me. They don't do that, they have issues.
Thank you, Mr. Bates. Next up, Caesar's Baby.
I mean, it's all the right thing. And it all comes down to the right thing. First, we got to say we have a lot of this money. But we had a nine million dollar deficit in the last budget season that got cut, right? Started nine million, and they ended up with a five thousand dollar surplus, which immediately at that city council, we developed an open, they wanted this five thousand dollar negative. And then they had to fix it. At the top, also, you know that if I give our budget up, we got one million dollar budget of different finding resources. A few years ago, we saved one employee because we found money that was being misused. Right now, the city is looking into a small audit of our finances to find out where our money is going. Also, we need to do an audit. We need to bring over revenue. We need to do more business revenue. We need to make outgoing calls to businesses to give us their revenue. Then we need to take incoming calls. We need to be there, pick up the phone. We are a city of over a hundred and ten thousand people. We have one person in the economic development department, city's town capital, has about twenty-five thousand people. They have six. Let's prioritize, go through these with the money, to bring more revenue, so we can pay for services. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bates. Next up, Eduardo Ortiz.
Yes, the question, or the answers are all over the board and on the opposite of the question. Could you repeat, please?
Yes. The city of Richmond has, uh, residents of Richmond, cumulatively, is one of the highest taxed boroughs in the nation. This is by a hundred and fifty-dollar household income of fifty-five thousand dollars and a cost of living that is thirty-nine point five percent higher than national average. Yet, for their money, residents continue to be dissatisfied with the level of services provided by the city. What will you do to be more visibly responsible with resident plus and providing better services in the city of Richmond?
Okay, well, uh, the main problem is, is property tax. And if you don't do property tax, uh, you'll see that the majority of the money goes to the school district. So the city has nothing to do with the school district. So we can't do things about that. But we can do things about, uh, public services. One of the things that the mayor and I did was, was we put an S R P on the ballot. An S R P is going to, uh, if it passed, we'll, we'll create a S R P for, uh, abandoned properties that they've lost. And that will simplify those property owners who make use of the properties, which will, uh, in turn create businesses and, and provide more revenue. Just, just on the finance level, rather than fees, will, uh, will raise several, uh, billion dollars, billion dollars. Anyway, uh, much more than we have now. And, uh, and that will, uh, provide services. Most people do.
Thank you, Mr. Ortiz. Next up, Gilbert Johnson.
Well, in addition to the lack of city services, I think one of the biggest hurdles that the city is facing is our six hundred million dollar, uh, pension debt obligation. And, uh, we heard an answer up here, an answer up here. In order to we go that debt obligation, in order to provide our services to our community, those green parks, those state roads, we have to increase our revenue sharing. Yeah, recruiting businesses is most definitely something that I want to work on. But at the same time, we have city resources in the city of Richmond that we can expand upon. So that way we can increase our revenue sharing. The quarter of Richmond is one of them. I sat down with the quarter director and he told me, um, in addition to the ten million dollars that the quarter brings in annually, if he had fifty-two hundred more acres, he could bring in five to ten million more dollars. So that's effectively doubling the amount that the quarter brings in. And so, and he, that would help us provide more services to the city of Richmond, especially the neighborhoods that want to see their roads be paved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Next up, Oliver Osos.
For some of our longer-term projects, like pay for roads and building more housing, we really have to advocate for our fair share of county and city funds. And some of the priorities that I want to implement is to rehire the lobbyists that will see our needs to county and cities. And some of the priorities that I want to implement is to rehire the audience that will see our needs to come into cities to further than our future. I also think that one of the things that we can take on is our participatory budgeting. We can have our residents try to make a choose and try to balance our budget based on our priorities. And speaking with some of our service workers, what they told me is that there is a concern that it is a culture problem. They're very passionate about their jobs. They want to do more. They want to provide really great service. But they feel overburdened by some of the more administrative duties that they have to do. And right now, I'm working with them to lower that burden and work with management supervision to best keep our, in our personal development, so they feel fulfilled in their work.
Thank you, Mr. Osinos. Next up, Carol Johnson.
So, we definitely need an overhaul of our budget and cut out some of the head finsters. I think my hiring of the public and the off-line master, they don't even, uh, they're not having, uh, good, uh, job opportunities. And, um, we also need a lot of responses. Cities have been hearing a number of complaints just being, you know, out there in the community, one of my daily, uh, service. And mainly with the housing authority that they have not, they don't even have a executive director right now. I don't know what the, what the issues are, but, uh, but then, uh, people have been complaining and saying that they have not been getting a package of these laws. Forty-eight seventy-two options to it, and also the road repairs, the maintenance, everything, and the lack of response to be, to be overwhelmed in general.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Next up, Diego Garcia.
Regarding the tax, uh, more deeply, there's a lot of taxes going on in the city, and just here with other cities as well. The problem is that most of the taxes are going, uh, parts of the taxes are going to be there. Most people, uh, vote on taxes, but they're lacking in information of where that money is going and what they're doing with that money. I would like to be able to earmark some of those tax revenues, to be able to hold the city responsible of what exactly they're going to be doing with this money. Most people are not against. That's the reason why they vote for it. But they're really concerned and really upset because that money is not being used for what they allocated for. Most people understand, uh, that there's funds that they go for certain things. But the problem is that they don't see the, uh, the immediate response to those, uh, uh, lack of, uh, information, lack of supplies, lack of road pavement, or any of those resources, and that's the reason why they vote against it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. We are doing so well on time. You have time for one more sixty-second answer question. So, we're going to give that name. Thank you very much for your clarity and readyness, Mr. Garcia. We'll start over there with you, Mr. Garcia, from the seat of my life. There is a small community near the center of the city of Richon. It's about a mile square. It's about three thousand residents. But it's not in the city of Richon due to historical circumstances. This is unincorporated community called North Richon. Should North Richon be incorporated as part of the city? Why or not? Mr. Garcia, sixty seconds, please.
Yes, uh, I believe it should. It only depends on the resources that we have here in the city of Richon versus the resources that the county has. The county, although, has a lot of resources, but if it's not about immigration, regarding immigration, whether their, um, government rules and bylaws and laws, those really, uh, contribute much to the residents who are currently living there. And, uh, the, um, ready for issues, that's something that, uh, uh, citizens from North Richon will definitely benefit a lot. Now, again, note that if they can incorporate it, the resources from the county will not be lost. So, they will still have those resources, and they will still have a lot of, uh, uh, pluses that we have with the food district, the city, and the county. So, I'm for it. I would love to see a lot of our, um, residents, rural residents and urban residents understand that there is a division between them. They understand about the resources. So, I'll just give this.
Mr. Garcia, thank you. Next up, Carol Johnson.
Uh, it may sound good on the surface. I have some experience about annexing North Richon with property taxes going up. And it may fall under the rent control of the past, but, uh, that would just, uh, increase the gentrification displacement when the property taxes go up. And I think we should be doing a better job of providing services to North Richon residents. So, I think that's one of the goals.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Next up, Oliver Osinos.
The annexation is a challenge because we know that there will be a shortfall of funds if we don't act. And that is because we are paying for historical activities that were done a long time ago, including North Richon, South Richon. And so, I believe in seeing with community leadership, that it would be a great advantage to provide the services that the city of Richon provides, such as community policing, being a sanctuary city, having great control to provide to residents there. That being said, the direction that we gave to staff was to orient and educate the community so that they can decide if they would like to come over to Richon. And also to speak to our Richon residents and find out if they are interested in it as well. So, again, at the end of the day, while I might feel that it is a good decision to provide that type of service, I think that it is going to come to North Richon residents to decide on themselves. Thank you.
Mr. Osinos, thank you. Next up, David.
Well, as we shine before the race for Richon residents, and when my very grandparents first signed their agency to Richon, they were restricted to go to Richon exclusively, which is one of the reasons why my grandfather opened up this boy nightclub and road company. Um, so, I would love to see those historical, um, ser, uh, historical, um, excuse me. I would love to see those get rectified. I would like to, I would like to make sure that, before we do that, though, that we approve our works of North Richon residents. Well, Richon owns a piece of North Richon all the way up to Chatham. And before we annex the residents of North Richon, we have to make sure that we're taking care of that piece all the way up to Chatham. Because if we're looking to increase people's taxes, while we're already talking about having a strict, um, resource, as well as another resource when it comes to paying roads and fixing our parks, and North Richon does have road and parks that need to be fixed as well. We have to make sure that we're taking care of our land, because if they promise trees to save me in the Richon side, then we can't save them on any terms. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Osinos. Next up, Eduardo Martínez.
Yes, uh, I work with neighbors with cops in North Richon, so I'm familiar with the, uh, area. And, um, I promoted, uh, annexation in my office there, and I got a no way from the residents. So, I feel that this desire to annex North Richon isn't coming from North Richon. It's coming from somewhere else. I don't know where that is. But, uh, uh, I, I did a study on annexation, and I found that in Memphis, uh, they're actually de-annexing areas because the areas that were annexed previously realized that the city could not provide the services. And that's what I feel will happen with North Richon. As, as there must be a million-dollar structural deficit, which will create less services for, for the residents of Richon proper. So, uh, I think that needs to be evaluated, and at this point, I don't think it's proper time because we are already, uh, on borderline, uh, budget.
Thank you, Mr. Martínez. Next up, Caesar.
Also, annexation is important. The community has to be able to make a conscious decision. The other ones are there. Um, which, by the way, North Richon is having a little piece of Richon inside of it, and looking at the map, it's a sort of block ourselves. So, it's really weird how they annex some or not others. But also, instead of going back to the community, uh, to look at and realize opposing opponents want the costs of the taxes. Right? And if they do get annexed, the taxes are going to increase because Richon has one of the highest taxes of the nation. So, that is what we want to think. If they do get annexed, how can we be sure that we provide for them while they're adjusted to a huge tax increase? If the lower income community, and once we go in, we're going to take a huge chunk of money from them that we don't want to program for. If they do want to participate in starting a city of Richon, we can figure out a process. We can also maybe give them more services once we get services. Uh, but ultimately, it has to affect the community. They have to find a road and sit on where they wish to live or, or share their life.
Thank you, Mr. Osinos. Next up, Matt Bates.
As well, yes, there was annexation of North Richon at one point. Only the property owners had a right to vote for the annexation, but it's not been allowed change, and property, uh, residents, the sector has that right. That is a bit of a question, because North Richon doesn't have any industry. They have no business. It's all property tax, taxes. And there's no way a property that is consistently, uh, within a jurisdiction that only property owners can afford the amount of needs that's required. You got to have sidewalks. You guys say, "I have no sidewalks there." You got to have public facilities and homework. That means that if annexation take place, the citizens of this city is going to have to subsidize. And I don't think you really want to pay for someone coming to the city. You really want them to pay a full share if they're going to be annexed to the city of Richon.
Thank you, Mr. Bates. Next up, Diego Chauvin.
So, I think it would be highly redundant for us to make a decision on this. It has to come from the community. It has to be a collaborative solution, right? Where the, they not there, they have their voices in the room, and they're respected. And that's where the decision has to be made. And thinking about redlining and thinking about the connect with the, to the city for, for years. If we flipped it on its head and we said, "What if we had an incredible community benefits program that if they were annexed, that they would benefit from the development in the area?" If the city won, that area becomes more valuable because of the city services. So, would we build in a benefits program that allowed them to perhaps get income from the development in the area? May that just teed area up growth, so that the people there don't get displaced, and we have a beautiful community in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Next up, David. Yeah, so, I don't think that it would really regress historical injustice by slamming more taxes on a lower-income community. Uh, also, you know, the city or cities from the one to two million dollars of extra, uh, expenses, some other services that will come. And there are a lot of stuff that you know why, who was pushing for this. I think it does. It's basically, uh, there's a lot of space. They're not rich enough. They should be, so, car wash. That is why the annexation is being pushed, there's an honest about it. And here's the thing, the immediate benefit is that we can provide better police services. But why can't we do that by fostering a better law enforcement economy share? Bottom line, suggest, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gray. Next up, Jim Rogers.
First thing to remember here is that the city side, the North Richon, and the county side share a lot of demographics, low-income, high-income area. But there's a difference. Talk about serious unemployment sites, you have a hugely larger number of people dying, being shot, going to jail, et cetera, in the unperceived. Why is that? Because the county can simply not take care of it. It's too far away. They're not giving the community people across the border. In a former life as county supervisor, I had the idea to try and put the choice to the folks in North Richon. But legally, it has to be their choice. They're a week in, they're their choice. But here's the deal. This is costing the county a lot of money also. We potentially can make a lot of money, not just in our money, but for businesses that want to site in this area and not be residents. We have a lot of that. So, what we have to do is recreate a negotiating with the county, get the cost down as low as we can for the best negotiations with the county, but it's just, uh, and then put it out to the rest of the city.
So, now, we will begin our lightning round. These will be questions that will provide you only thirty seconds to respond. So, please do as concise as possible. We will have a hard deadline on that thirty seconds. We will also relatively progressive, the fact that more of us we have, we'll bounce around in the next course and keep the other close. So, again, these questions will, will provide you thirty seconds to respond. Uh, please do your best. I will think around, uh, the dice field. First question. The city of Richon elects councils yourselves at large, meaning that everyone in the city can vote for every seat. There are other cities that are this size, larger, that have district elections. And we argue for those and that, uh, ensures better stewardship of the community, reasons over. There are also counterbalance. The question is, are you in favor of district elections in the city of Richon? Why or why not? Let's see if it will take Mr. Johnson to hear it.
Most definitely. Well, um, I'm not, that's my question. No, um, I'm most definitely above the idea of being accountable to every resident, to every neighborhood in the city of Richon. Um, if we didn't have, if we didn't have the initial election debate come up, I would like to see the maps and the outlines drawn before I can throw my support behind it. But I'm most definitely, um, currently, I love the way it is and was to be responsible for everyone. And I may never say, "Hey, if you call it, I'll usually charge you."
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Next up, Diego Chauvin.
I'm not going to see. Uh, so, I, I, I've long thought of this idea, um, as a very interesting and a great idea around the idea of representation. So, when they said, "Hey, can you run for office?" And I said, "How much is it going to cost me? How much am I going to raise?" They said, "One hundred thousand dollars." I said, "How in the world can anybody from, you know, this living here says, 'Okay, I'm a, I'm a representative of the city. We have to raise that kind of money.'" Representation on the ground level, I think is a fundamentally good thing, and it, uh, is something that we should really consider.
Thank you, Mr. Chauvin. Next up, Caesar.
Hey, yes. District elections empower communities to create more accountability. Imagine having your councilmember feel the same pain you feel when you're driving down the road and you get caught. They're not living on the other side of the town. It has been over thirty years since Hilltop has elected someone from Hilltop. We are not being represented up here. There's several communities that are not being represented because the money flows from one place and not anywhere else.
Thank you, Mr. Chauvin. Next up, Carol Johnson.
So, actually, the district elections sound good on the surface, but I have very mixed feelings about it because I'm from San Francisco, and they don't work there at all. And I believe in one Richon, so I believe if I, even though I live in each Richon, I, I have no problems, you know, city center, north, south, wherever. I just tell me.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Next up, Matt Bates.
You want to see polarization, go with the history elections. What will happen is that if you have four councilmembers in this house, they get together, they all like each particular council. Who runs it, X, Y, Z, he gets a number. They share a home for themselves. That is not a Democrat, that is a Democrat. If you want someone that's accountable, that every voter in the city, they're in, uh, you have a better, more effective government.
Thank you, Mr. Bates. Next up, David. Thirty seconds. Uh, so, uh, I agree with councilmen and advocates about the disadvantages. But I also agree with the other support on the advantages, where you get some of your representation. Uh, you have more, you have more accountability. So, uh, bottom line is, council cannot refuse this. They're absolutely put to a vote of the people, and I'm absolutely sure they're put to a vote of it. Thank you, Mr. Gray. Next up, Diego Garcia.
Being a leader doesn't have to come from this one community. Being a leader has to be able to serve anyone. It doesn't matter where you're at. And coming from Richon, coming from a, a, uh, community, the question is, is this community member fit here for a long time to be able to understand the needs of everyone? So, the district, uh, elections or at large, it's okay. However, the community needs to understand that that leader should be able for everyone, that goes to one particular person.
Next up, Oliver Osinos.
The district election itself drawing their areas does not always make cities more representative. It doesn't necessarily encourage people to go or have them for now. I think that is a larger challenge. That doesn't always result in what we think it will. One of the examples is school for elections, where there's a demand that the parents all did represent them. I think it also creates, uh, challenges when there are regions or areas that don't have economic development, that need to have more housing. Then how do you prioritize your region, including the one?
Next up, you're on.
Thank you. I respect the, uh, opinions of folks who'd like to say again. But when we talk about accountability, think of, you have a really global project in your neighborhood. And it's being driven by somebody who's not popular with people of Richon. Maybe they have money, they have contributions, or this. And now, all of a sudden, instead of being able to help major case to all seven of your representatives, you can only major case sort of. through the grocery. Come on, that was just a slight thing. But what about the other six? That's all.
Thank you. And last but not least, the word is?
Well, this subject came up before the city council. Someone, they pointed that the city elections, Tom, Robert, and Natface, one of them had to go. Gail, Paul, and myself, one of them had to go. I certainly said that we actually don't have to worry because I'm sure we can spot, we can make the district lines that we can all say on. Now, that is a problem with district elections. You, how do you draw the lines? And
Thank you. And we will start now our next question again, lightning round. Thirty seconds. We'll bounce around. The homeless issue is a crisis across the state, the Bay Area, certainly here in Richmond. We have homeless students, homeless families. It is a severe problem, both on both who would directly affect and as well as our communities. What will you do foremost on your first day in office to address the homeless problem? Let's begin with Natface. Natface, what will you do to address the homeless problem?
I would say, any. Okay. That is a national problem. And when we find that homeless individuals are coming from back east, whether it's terrible, they come from California. And it's a federal problem because many of them clearly have some serious problems. We have facilities, but they don't really look at the facilities. They don't have the rules of regulation, or the roads, and alcohol. So there is a problem that you don't have to deal with. You don't have a solution.
Thank you, Mr. Bates. Next up, Oliver Seals.
We are going to be investing about three hundred thousand dollars to enable this export to create halfway service or direct service. This is going to allow us to meet people where they are, whether that is we need healthcare, we need jobs, we need a home, we need healthy food. And that's the best way to approach it is to ask homeless individuals what is it they need in this moment to be able to thrive and go forward. Another thing that we have to do is permission. That's why our controls are even more impacted to keep people homeless.
Thank you, Mr. Bates. Next up, Gabriel.
I think in the long run, there's a lot of issues here and the ongoing cutback from the Trump administration is certainly others to give people psychological counseling, health and support, dog training, various drug abuse issues that help the baby. In the short term, it's really simple. We have planned to respond to that and to tax paid properties. And that money is going to be targeted and to be only with assisting people who are homeless. We will pass that and share.
Thank you. The word is.
Yes. Just yesterday, I went to a regional meeting in the city of Oakland, Berkeley, Richmond, and San Francisco. And our task was to deal with homelessness on a regional basis. Because it's a regional problem. It's not just a regional problem. It's a regional problem. We have to deal with it regionally. So one of the issues, we also realized that we can't do it all. So we focused on meeting the homeless who have RV cameras. So we want to set up some sort of venue for them to
Next up, Carol Johnson.
So I believe that we need to improve our mental health services for homeless people or struggling with those challenges and some speech reading. And also have all of these vacant properties around the city. We can utilize those and have the fees for abandoned property that is not being used. And also having rent control because the lack of rent control is one of the biggest imperatives of homelessness.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Next up, Diego Garcia.
For the past fifteen years, thirteen years, I organized food drives. And that's the opportunity that I have to be able to sit with them and talk to them regularly. Be able to build a one-stop shop where we can give the services they want, what they need. Most of them don't have the services right in front of their fridge. And some of them just need a cell phone, some of them just need an address. Some of them actually need a home. And we have to categorize in different areas. You have people who are homeless, don't have a home, and you also have a homeless person. We need to
Thank you. David Johnson.
Yeah, so following on with Mr. Garcia. The idea is that people who are experiencing homelessness, and it's not a permanent solution, this isn't a permanent state, right? So we can have a solution where they are like a warning center, and as a matter of that group, so when they come in, we can assess, do they need mental health services? Do they need shelter? Do they need food? Do they, what do they need? So that we can build them through the system. And also, I am one of those, incent these properties that are being charged, incent them to develop the properties. So more than thirty seconds solution. That's if you gather a fine solution for us.
Thank you. Next up, David Johnson.
Yeah, so I'm part of a group that is trying to work on the homelessness issue. And the main thing that you're reporting on, I do have a focus today is very dependent on regular budgetary tax on home. If it doesn't, I'm certainly going to ensure that as long as a bunch of the money goes to homelessness, instead of the sort of like a general requirement. And so also, Gavin, we said, these are going to have a better position for homelessness. And we had to work with them because we know it's a regional issue.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bates. Next up, Oliver Seals. Oh, yes. At the base of the picture, next, see you.
First thing I have to do is humanize the individuals that are homeless. They're not just them. It is our friends, our family members, our neighbors. So let's see how it is in first. From there, we move on to the health services we do, right? And give it for the funding for the city that has no money, right? And to buy services, there's plenty of money. So we can actually put on money or on the office.
Thank you, Mr. Bates. Next up, Diego Garcia.
Well, I believe one of the best sources of action for us today is part of the county office. As you talked about, Robert, you got your office to see funding for micro pads, which are typically very, very big burdened to the markets. Or, you know, not just out looking for the homeless. They stack on top of each other and then at the bottom, there are driver-owned services. So that way, you can get to do a dependency, with the dependency levels and your dependency issues, as well as the workforce development down there. So that way, it's transitional and it's not, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. I can ask challenging. Thanks very much. We'll do another thirty second question. For all of our colleagues on which we're working together, we are also often a fractious community. Our city house seems to be sharply divided into factions. The point where many members of the community believe that our elected citizens will listen to them. Social media companies often become viciously hostile. At election time, you always see the equation that destroys the community. How can we expect you to reverse the negativity? What will you do to foster an environment in which we work together better to solve our problems?
Let's start with Oliver. I was actually on the council during the time, which was significantly more fractious than it may be out there today. And the way you deal with it is you think they're your own business. You don't get involved with it. You don't own things. You don't bring your political stuff into the council. You stick with the policy stuff. Somebody did, my husband, I shared a common cause, which is a political forum, had to, we had a saying, which was, no permanent friends, no permanent enemies. Keep the ideology and dislike the people out of the ability situation.
Thank you. Next up, David.
It's not respect. It's not bringing everyone to the table regardless of what you consider your. I wish to hear this quote that said, if you're not at the table, you are off of the menu. And whose only on the menu is our residents, it's our community. If we can't get along with each other, and if we can't have conversations where we agree to disagree, but figure out how to move the community forward, we're going to be off the menu. So let's work together.
Thank you, Mr. Bates. Next up, David Johnson.
So since I started running in March, and I talked about this a little bit earlier, I was really interested in finding people who kind of like to look like me and pop like me. It was looking interested in people with different people. Have to put in mind with a collaborative solution expert. We lock people in the room, we talk about all kind of issues. People most that we find who are negatively opposed, that's what we find the best solution. So what I'm seeing you do is break through, step back first and foremost, and then put people in the room together to find long-lasting solutions.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Next up, Diego Garcia.
Well, that was one of the things we aspire of running this city council. Because we are bringing that positivity and respect to the council. I heard one time, one of my parents said, either on the way or in the way. And one of the biggest things that I like turning to in the atmosphere is gear with the positive and how to work with each other, regardless if you agree or disagree with the situation. We have to keep in mind that we're not here for any personal interest. We're here for the best interests of the community. If we can keep that in track, we'll be open.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Next up, David.
Yeah, so folks who are trying to meet with me know that anybody who wants to meet with me gets a one hour or within a week, it doesn't matter which political faction I'm from. I was at council, I looked at, I looked at Natface about the water issue, about the district compensation. I looked at the council on our unit, about the project, Malaga, I looked at Miramar. So I would expect the purpose, and the nature of it is very simple. Just physical, simple facts. That's all we need to be. That's what I agree with. And I wasn't talking about the bigger. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bates. Next up, the word is.
Yes. I see policy, I see facts. And the problem arises when people have two different sets of facts. And when that happens, you know, you have to do some fact checking and to agree somehow. And sometimes you just have to be disagreeing. But the main thing is that you do it with a reset. I constantly ask my co-mergers and the public to monitor me. If they think I'm disrespectful, or say you mean wrong, I'll
Next up, Carol Johnson.
So I have nothing to respect for my fellow candidates. We all come from very diverse backgrounds. And we do disagree on new things. But the important thing is to focus on similarities and not differences, to attack the issues and not get covered.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Next up, Diego Garcia.
Well, I look at myself by two political policies. The first one is, let me force balance. And that's why I feel that consistent and honest engagement is very important. The second one is, no one person or party has a silver bullet that is diverse from people we call Americans. So we always have to be willing to reach across our, find a common ground, and be willing to work together. So that way, we can work together for another without infringing on one another. And that's how I approach everything I have to attempt to help approach your council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Next up, Natface.
Good, my good hour worked with all sorts of thousands of people. One of the things I've learned, first, be professional. Second, be courteous and respectful. Very person that you may have this agreement today with, that's the same person after the party and after his vote on nomination. Be consistent, be respectful, and do your homework, and you should do okay.
Thank you, Mr. Bates. Next up, Oliver Seals.
As someone who's had to get a slap, a gatletum, I think that the most important thing is, we all are trying to work together. And people disagree. And I think that's very important, actually. Because if we are all agreeing on policy a hundred percent, we're not making excuses as we should be. And so for me, I know that the most important thing is I treat the dice with the perspective that I deserve because I know that my work is about all Richmond. And I expect, and I will appreciate it, the rest of the people also doing today.
Thank you, Mr. Seals. Let me ask our hopes if we have time for one more question?
All right. We have one more question. Sure.
Okay. In the spirit of fostering collaboration, let's do a thirty-second round, one last of the lightning round. And this is a little bit of orthodox, but I think it will work for our venue and for our audience. Choose one of your opponents up here today and tell us something positive that you see in their work or character. Let's start with Natface.
Look, I can't choose one because I think every one of these individuals running for the council are very deserving. And they are, they're committed to that community. And that's the way it should be. But we need to say aloud, one, the respect of the others. And as I say, I don't complain. And I don't say all about these. So I can't pick one. I have to say that.
Thank you, Mr. Bates. Next up, David.
I have to say that this is an incredible group. Anybody that's willing to step up and serve, and serve our community, I might ask all of them for it. And in particular, Mr. Play next to me, he has an incredible mind related to finance. And I'm always amazed at it. And what he does with that mind is pretty incredible. So I'm definitely in the way.
Next up, Oliver Seals.
I agree. I know there's only a couple things. I don't want to shout out all the women who are ready. But I think we are in a very ridiculous time to get women in this country. And I think it's important now, and it will continue to be important. So I just avoid it on a hundred percent. Like, at least one of us is better to be over there. And so that's, that's what I'm proud of. And I'm excited to share this experience with them.
Thank you. Jim.
Well, I'm going to pick out one person, but I would like to say something about two people. One is, I've known different sides of missions and athletes. I can tell you a personal experience. One is on the other side of the issue, we really don't want to be there. He's very sharp, very clever, very intelligent. Medicine in the council, the name is out on at the time. He had more questions to me, which are about voting for any others either that we were, I really respect a lot.
Thank you, Mr. Seals. Good evening, David.
I would say, my next reason. So Councilman Natface, because he was always humble and he was always here, right here in the area, just saying, putting the experts. Season is very hardworking. They really try to bring together, bring everyone together, has a open mind for different solutions. You know, Jim is always very thoughtful on one issue. So that is what I'm anxious to say in regards to the law.
Thank you. Diego Garcia.
If you're going to be our big, from this group that we have here, everyone has shown that they're qualified for this position. But I would choose Vicky. Vicky has a great heart. She comes in, she tries to do her best. And I really commend her for showing up and being interesting, how she feels, even though she's very nervous. I really commend for her continuing to come in every single one of the times. And you know, she's not here today, but I really commend Vicky.
Next up.
Well, as we said, these are great people candidates. And one of them is six times, sometimes I'm just seeing everybody just about every night. You know, I'm most definitely called away every day. But I have to say, I'm most definitely acknowledge that Oliver Seals, my fellow man who was running for Richmond City Council, just for the simple fact that, you know, I know that's another person, he can't be good for the game. But he added, you know, you're a woman in this time, you know, running. So that's, I guess a little too. I called away every day. And I respect Mr. Seals there. Thank you.
Thank you. The word is.
Yes. I work with David Garcia on the Republican Party's department. And I like to say that's, that he share way of working with everyone. Carol Johnson has gotten my endorsement. She's gotten my endorsement because she has a dear heart. And she's, she said, she's a real human and she knows how to bring out the best in people. And Oliver Seals, he really has a serious, we know how to work together. And we understand that, and we're all the same.
Next up, Carol Johnson.
So many good things to say.
Thirty seconds.
I want to first commend that A because, uh, despite his obstacles, he didn't let it stop him. And he's here, he deserves to be here, he's earned to see it at the table. And also for the older candidates that have definitely been experienced and valid, and the younger candidates. I think you remember myself in my mid twenties, I don't know where you guys are.
And last, Alise, you too.
That's a super tough question. Uh, but, you know, at first, I'm grateful for those who still stand on, for those who have been in the council before. Uh, grateful for those younger generation that has set up to be our community forward. And there's so many others as well. I mean, I started off, uh, to get props to him because of his beautiful mind and how he works in others. And he's always upfront with our community. We have so many very committed people. They, people are never gonna make the, the way you, uh, they, you know, there's, I mean, there's so many of you out there. Thank you.
We will transition now for our closing statements. Those will be one minute each. And just a note for those to be scored, uh, just for fun, the name of the play, they get four votes in the song. Well done, well done. And I should mention that show them all about three dates and Rositos at two each. And there are also votes for Vicky, uh, Ramirez, Victor Ramirez, Carol Johnson, Carol Johnson, David Garcia, Seamus Bader, and Jim Rogers. So, well done, thank you, five seconds. Okay, meanwhile, now, these closing statements, we'll start with Jim Rogers, we'll progress the rest of the way. These will be sixty-seven each. Please make your final case to the residents of Richmond for the year and while you might see videos. Uh, thank you very much. Is that anything you'd want to do?
Thank you, man, for coming. Um, feeling the recent, uh, debacle with the cabinet hearings, it reminds me that the most important thing we can do is seriously listening to other people. Regardless of whether they're down for a proposal, they mail me, you know, you know, whatever they say, or whatever, um, sexual preference they have, or whatever, that's probably the most important thing. It's a lot of why I've been able to be successful saving the schools, the government, and the United States, the Apple Billings, that's the public finance that can be performed, because I do listen to other people. And I don't get caught up in any ideological drafts. Uh, Richard Griffin, the lady, Richard Griffin, I'm sure a lot of you know him. Uh, so on the next, next, and I agree, he said Jim Rogers is the fairest person I know. I appreciate that compliment, and I'd love to, and I'd like to, again, do a project. Thank you.
Jim Rogers, thank you. Next up, David Garcia.
So thank you all for coming out. The most important role of a city council member is to oversee the city budget, which is zero, is one hundred and sixty million dollars. So you need somebody who understands these finances. We have a very complicated, uh, debt. So you need somebody who can understand those. I am currently, uh, I can, you know, I can use those skills to understand, uh, basically these, uh, financial issues. And that's why it's very kind of said that I was the smartest, uh, and most financially secure council member. And they know, I mean, they endorse me because they know that I place my decisions on the areas, on the facts. That's also why the California Democratic Party and the Colorado Democratic Party are a core student. And you, you folks know that I come here, and I've run the water for many times. I, I will be here for you, I will be working for you, at least nine hours in council, so I'm scared of the day.
Thank you, David Garcia. Next up, David Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia, for hosting us tonight. And, uh, I start with my reason why. And my reason why is my, my daughter. She's twelve years old, I raised the first generation of rich of her. And I think about the world that we're leaving behind for her. And if I don't take a chance in such a way, then how am I not going to share, tell her, share with her what, what the world's gonna be like? I have to be the change maker. And so when I talk about such a way, yes, I was a professional surfer for a time, and so there's a reason for that. But Richmond is on the move. We are on the move, we can get it out, we can make great things happen, we can make our city safe, we can build great housing. We can do all of that and keep our neighborhoods intact, but we have to do it together. We can't do it alone. So with that, you can tell that we're working together right here. I'm asking for your vote to work with you and make this city amazing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, David Garcia. Next up, Nat Bates.
You know, after the nice compliment from, uh, Congressman Rogers and this, and play, I have to go and revisit my ballot. If one other made that same comment, I probably had to leave my name off. But I've been here twice, you know, city council for almost twenty decades. Uh, I love working for people. Uh, I love this community. I don't think anyone is more responsible for this community than I am. And you can check up on all the residents who reside here. That's why this election, in my opinion, is not that I did it. The second thing is that this community is where you can have a lot of friends here, I've been to school with. And I would appreciate your vote, going on the sector, continue to serve you and the rest of the community. Even though I was in here, you have been one of the best communities that I've worked in and supported my candidates.
Thank you, Mr. Bates. Next up, Seamus Bader.
So again, I'm a candidate in the community here that gets things done. Once elected, or even if not, because you do not need a title to get things done. I will make sure that we bring back a hospital. I will make sure that we bring back grocery stores all around the city of Richmond. A hundred and ten thousand people, we're gonna have a real true grocery store. Sidewalks, more housing, make sure that we know that we're a college town. We have a college, it's right down the street. Let's get our people to copy our education and go to college. And about this elections, Vic, visit thiselection.net because it will empower your communities. You will make sure that the people draw those lines. So vote for it about them before you say anything else. By the way, it's also a law. So right now, we're not following that. So we're not asking whether you want this election or not, it's all very hard to law. So I hope that these terms, your votes, deserve.
Next up, Eduardo Martinez.
Uh, people, uh, well, they're being silly. It doesn't matter what it is, it's silly. And, uh, a lot of people, they actions without examining what the, what, uh, what that means when they do that or when they make that decision. So, uh, I'm here as a people person. I'm here to represent residents, and I'm here to represent residents of all Richmond. Um, I have a vote to our policy. Anyone can call me anytime on my card, I have my cell phone number, I have my office number. And I will set up meetings at any time, be there for anyone who lives in Richmond to help you solve your problems. So, uh, 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 come to me, I'm here for you.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Next up, Eduardo Johnson.
Well, once again, my name is Eduardo Johnson III, and I'm fourth generation Richmond resident, and I'm fourth generation community member as well. I was born and raised here in the city of Richmond, and in this age of displaced and identification as Richmond moves forward, we need homegrown leadership who are from here and understand our nuances, so that way we can move forward without leaving anyone behind. As nation, my platform includes community engagement, public safety, and economic development. That's why I have two former mayors, six former city council members, and, and also current city councilor, Jay O'Lyrie, the California State Democratic Party, the Democratic Party of the Contra County, Lenny Democrats, General Democrats, as well as the Dicky Faceon, who said that I was the young candidate who did his homework at the All In Water sign campaign. And I hope the governor's state, she will do the favor of electing your city council member. Once again, my name is Eduardo Johnson III, I'm third on the ballot, and I hope you should work that off. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Next up, Oliver Ciosas.
So, I was appointed to the city council last fall, and it would be my honor to continue serving you in that capacity. I think that I have a lot of great ideas for this city, and they're only great ideas because I've lived through a lot of them. I've lived through a lot of challenges. I know it's like I've been evicted from home at a young age, and I know that several of my parents have me to juggle multiple jobs at a time. Sometimes I need to take out that burden against me. That's becoming a new normal for a lot of our families in California. And we need to be the protectors, we also need to be the community educators that bring people to the table, develop legislation that is in their best interest. And I think that for a long time, the previous generation hasn't only done that for us. It's the reason why I needed to step up. I know that we need to do things differently, I know that we need to challenge ourselves, and I know that we need to do a better job of knowing what's better for us and holding our life to the norm. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ciosas. Next, Carol Johnson.
So, personally, I'm a very hardworking person towards and all of his support. And also, if you want a candidate who is our city council person, who is fully committed in serving Richmond, regardless of whether it's north or the south, or, uh, we give you this Richmond. Uh, I have a proven record of the past seventeen years, I have been endorsed by a number of, uh, community advocates who have worked right off side with, who have used gun violence, who have used homelessness, increased resources for formerly incarcerated people, raising the middle way, and all of these wonderful issues. Uh, so if you want a city councilman who will respond in a timely manner, and who will feed the change that we need, and, uh, who will continue to show up to speak up, and will work me in a number, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. And the final words I will give to the university.
Yes, uh, we're going to show habits. I mean, regardless of what anyone says or they desire to do something, we really have to understand that we really need to look into the history of what have they provided in this community. I invite you guys to look at my resume, my credentials, of everyone who has endorsed me. Not only that, I have approval for everything that I have done for the past twenty-three years. And you teach a lot of sales class, and you talk about how to rewire people's brains. Because every first, January first, every year, people desire to do many things, but three days later, they forget all them. What I challenge you guys to do is to link to the best candidate who has proven that they do something, not just talk about it. I have been endorsed by so many people, and I'm really liking for you guys, we look at New York homework to be able to choose a best candidate to represent everyone in Richmond. We have a huge population of Latinos, and they are just huge. There's one right in the side of the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Let's get a hearty round of applause for all of our candidates. That was a great challenging debate. We got to a lot of very important issues. I want to begin, thank Arturo, and, uh, Susan, uh, Pastor Lloyd, Pastor Lawrence, and the Church. The Fairly Hillsup Neighborhood Council. And I would like to acknowledge, we're seeing a lot of events about the very happy. Good to see everyone. I'm Oliver Rogers. Be sure to vote.